Okay. Is there, I didn't bring a clicker along to, is there a clicker with your projector?
No, I have one next door, but I don't have one here.
That's all right. Perfect. All right, great. Okay, well, thanks for having me here this evening. I'm excited to talk with you about where we're at on your water rate study and get some input from you on the things that we've looked at so far. We're pleased to be working with you on this project. So I'll just get right into, into it. As you know, just, we kind of like to just lay the groundwork again when we start talking about these things, just refresh our memories, you know, why you're even doing this in the first place. I think you, you know, are well aware of why you're doing this, but you know, some of the objectives that we keep in mind throughout this process are that, you know, you, you're very focused on planning for the future to address the capital improvement needs that you have in your community. And while you do that, you want to be charging the right people for those types of things. And so you want to send the right price signal. You know, if you have capacity and water supply issues, you want to make sure that the people that are creating those the most, you know, you know, definitely get, get the signal that, that you, you want them to get and that they pay their fair share for that. And you guys probably know Greg, he's, he's here. He just got rolled in from Mitchell, so sorry, running, running today. So, and you, you know, you're intent on doing some proactive financial planning, which is excellent. That'll serve you well, you know, in terms of how you're viewed by your citizens, how the funding agencies look at you and all of those things. So I won't read all of these reasons, but I know that there's things that have probably crossed your minds or your staff minds as you've looked at what you need to do. So really, you know, when we're looking at your, your study, what this basically comes down to, the big points of emphasis here, the big drivers for this study are of course your capital needs in the water utility. You want to, you know, take a look at the timing of some of these improvements, how that can impact the rates, how that can impact funding options, how that parlay's into new O and M costs and increases your overall revenue requirements. You want to look at where your reserves are at now, where they will be along the way and, you know, keeping, you know, and develop a plan to maintain prudent reserves as, as you work through these projects. And then of course, to do that, you have to have revenue. And so you want to be sure that the rate structure that you have in place and other, any other charges that you have in place are going to support this overall plan. And so we're going to spend a lot of time talking tonight about rates and what you could do with the rates and what that would mean if you did it. And then moving forward from here, we will be implementing, you know, your thoughts on where you'd like to see, what kind of rate structures you would like to see moving forward and what that means in the end. Another component of this project will be looking at your current connection fee. In terms of, it sounds to me in discussions with staff that, that the desire is to, you know, move forward at some point with more of a system development charge rather than connection charge. So we'll be giving some input onto that concept, how that would, you know, play out and what that might look like for your community. But I won't be talking much about that tonight. We'll be focusing on your, your water rate structure, the basic water rate structure. So the reason I'm here then tonight is because it's always a good idea to kind of rope your sleeves with the policymakers early in these study processes and make sure that we all are on the same page. So we don't spend a bunch of time going down a road that in the end is, is a no-go for you all. So there's, there's really four areas that we would like some feedback from you on tonight and to understand where you're coming from. One of those is your conservation philosophy. The second is fixed charges versus variable charges in terms of, you know, how we want to stack revenue requirements behind those different types of charges. And then the other, one of the others is reserve funding policies and targets moving forward. And then how to approach those rate adjustments in the near term and, you know, potentially in the long term, as well as, you know, implementing capital funding options and phasing of the projects. And so really, you know, the, the bottom line here is, you know, today we're at the first bar shown here, the 2020 projected water rate revenue requirements. Down the road, you're going to be at that bar at the very, very end. So the, you know, the question is, how do we get from today to, you know, 2025? And so that's what we're, that's what we're here to help you with. And to do that, we want to get your thoughts so we can do it together. So again, I talked right up front about some of your challenges. I don't know that we need to go through these in detail. Just, you know, looking at revenue stability is going to be, well, conservation of course is, is a very high priority, but right along with that is revenue stability, which are kind of, they can be competing objectives. So managing that is, is very important. Affordability, we'll talk a little bit about affordability and, you know, how, how much of a consideration we need to make for that in Brandon. And, and then public education was another piece that I wanted to bring up towards the end of the discussion today. So as you probably know, rates for any utility are almost always driven, or the need to make adjustments to rates is almost always driven by capital. O and M is generally a fairly consistently increasing cost from year to year, except, you know, when you implement a new process and you have a new O and M coming online. But for the most part, capital is what drives big adjustments to rates. And so this is where we're sitting today in terms of just looking ahead for the next five years, the projects that are, you know, on your draft CIP, which is always kind of a work in progress, and then what the potential timing might be for these. And so one of the things we'll be looking at in the, in the rate study will be what, you know, what are some different configurations of this, of this table here? The connections to the wells, for instance, what if those were in 2021 or what if they were in 2022? You know, some of these items, you know, could very well shift around. And so that's the kind of thing that, that we're going to be looking at once we get some input from you on the rates. Just a note under the water treatment plant here, we, I just put, I'd seen a couple of numbers, a 12 million and a $20 million number, I believe. I just put the big one in there for now to kind of represent worst case scenario. That's the other thing that we'll be looking at as we do some different alternatives is, you know, what, what if it's this alternative instead, instead of 20 million? What's the impact look like in that case? So starting to, you know, talk and think about conservation again, as you, you've probably seen this graphic before, this is historical water use for Brandon going back to 2000. And the dotted line across the top shows that you have been, you know, slowly cutting back in, on water use in total over the years. So you've, you've had a lot of great efforts and, but you know that you, or there's a desire to do more for a couple of reasons, because conservation, it's just a good idea. It's a prudent way to run your utility, to minimize operating costs, to delay capital costs, you know, when you can. And so moving forward, we want to figure out, you know, who would, who is it that we need to target in terms of, of this conservation initiative? And this is a graphic of residential water use in Brandon from monthly since January 2017 through August of this year. And the blue line is the average water use and the red line is, is the median water use. And what we, what we see when we look at your water use is that the residents, as you know, are the ones that pick up, use a lot more water in the summer than in the winter. And so that's where you're, you know, you're pushed in terms of capacity at times. And so if, the peaking factors that are listed at the bottom there, those simply represent the ratio of your highest monthly use for a class to the average winter water use. And so residential units, you know, fourplexes and smaller, they're, they peak up over this period. The average was about 3.2 was their peaking factor. For the larger residential properties with five or more units, their peaking factor was about 2.02. So they use about twice as much water on their, on their highest water use day than in the winter. And then non-residential, your commercial, your industry, your churches and such, those are about 1.6 times and which is, you know, these are the kinds of numbers that we see in the industry. They're very consistent. So in terms of the policy direction, I mentioned the four things up front. So we'll talk about conservation first in terms of sending the right price signal. We'll talk about fixing variable rates, reserving policies and targets, and then, and then the capital funding. So moving into water conservation, so you have, you know, a fairly rigorous program already in place and that's excellent. So you, you've offered a number of resources for your community members. You have rebates and so you're, you're already doing a lot to incent people to be responsible about their water use. But we need, but there's a desire to do a little bit more, maybe, maybe not a lot more. That's what I kind of want to gauge from you all tonight. And, and the balance that I referenced earlier comes between, you know, it's great if we conserve, we prolong the infrastructure or we, we push off delays and increasing capacity, but we can also impact revenues. If people use less water, we can potentially bring less water in if we don't structure the signal right. So the question is, how strongly do we need to conserve? How strong should that conservation signal be? So this is monthly water usage by user class, again, from January 2017 through August. And so what you've seen is 30% of your water use in the summer goes out on the lawns. Your residential winter average is around 4,000 gallons per month for a single family home. And so that, that's a week, kind of the placeholder that we will refer to as winter water use because we like to be able in a rate structure, we like to be able to provide that baseline indoor water use needed to sustain, you know, life essentially. We like to keep that at the lowest, at the lowest tier. So that 4,000 gallon number is one to keep in mind. So as we look at how the different types of users use water, so you have, you have a whole lot of, your billing system is, is actually, it provides really great detail. It, it, you know, there's probably 20, 30 different types of users that are listed. And so what we did was we looked at how monthly averages looked, what, how the monthly, how the medians looked and how the summer and winter average and medians looked, and we kind of grouped them. That's where we determined that single family residential and as well as residential units up to four units looked very similar. So in the first line in this table, I'm showing just single family residential, only one, one unit homes. And so the number I highlighted there was 4,140. So the number on the previous slide, sorry, was all, was all residential. So 4,140 was single family residential winter median. The winter average was 4,148, which is, you know, almost essentially the same number. So the winter average and the winter median are, are very close. So an average user is right about in the middle of the pack for you. In the summer, again, the summer average and the summer median were very close. So if we move down to the second line, the residential units of four or less, we saw the winter median at about 3,600, the winter average at about 3,800. Again, very close to the single family residential. The residential units of four was where we started to see a break in how, in how the water is used. So if you look at the monthly average of 28,000, the monthly median of 21,000, that's clearly different water use pattern than the residential units of zero to four. And, and if you look at the winter median of 8,400, that's, you know, about twice the winter median of the single family. So I think as we look at both conserving water and structuring the rates, I think it makes sense to treat the residential of four units and less different from the greater than four. But this is the kind of topic that we want to have discussion about tonight. So both, both of those user classes are those that need to be target, you know, incented to conserve water. And so implementing some type of inclining block structure, whereas the water that use increases, they pay more for those higher units of water would be the, the type of incentive that is, is often used in that case.
Is that just because there's more people there or there's more watering or what's the, why is it more?
I think it's because there's more people, there are bigger meters. And so, you know, and the reason that we, that we, you know, suggest considering treating them differently is because if you set up an inclining tier structure, for instance, and you base it on winter average use for a single family residential, it, it wouldn't be fair to those residential greater than four units if we set a, you know, winter average of 5,000 gallons, for instance, or in that first tier, because those resident, those larger residential units would get out of that first tier immediately, just with their basic water use. And so, and you can see in the red there, I highlighted all residential, non-residential, excuse me, water users, you know, they are clearly different in how they use water from, from the residential users. So again, treating them separately, I think makes a lot of sense. The other thing to note there is that the average, the winter average of 12,775, and if you compare that to the winter median of 1,875, so the median is like the, at the 50th percentile. And so that tells you that you have a lot of big water users in that class and you have a, well, I'm sorry, you have a lot of low water users and you have a couple of really big ones that bring the average up, but for the most part, they're going to, you know, they're smaller because at the, the 50th water user is only at 1,875 in the winter, right? And the average is at 12,000. So that means you have some really big water users that are bringing up that average and most are going to be small, which I think makes sense in a community like yours, that most would be smaller, smaller usage.
Back to the residential of the four. And Barb's question about just getting more people versus watering. I mean, that, the number of winter median from 8,400 to 3,100, I mean, that's quite beautiful compared to the other ones going up like 25, 30%. I mean, that's got to be out of bounds.
Right, yes, I'm sorry. Yep, the summer, the summer usage, yeah, would, would reflect some outdoor watering and that's why those users as well should get a conservation signal in their rate. Some cities will treat those larger residential properties the same as commercial and will also, and will often charge them a constant block rate. But in a situation where you have a conservation minded approach to residential water use, they clearly, like you point out, they're clearly using water outside, they, they as well need to receive the same signal as the smaller residents.
The percentage wise, do I care? The worst, but they're also the most number.
Right. I didn't bring those numbers with me. I think their peaking factor was smaller because they use more water to start with. They probably don't have as much lawn area to water, you know? I think the, the single family residential by far peak up higher on a percentage basis, but, but they all peak and could shave a bit of that off probably. Any other comments there? Okay. So for the most part, I mean, this is, there's some statistics that I wanted you to understand and be thinking about as we get into the rate alternative discussion. So, so if we, you know, if we look at how the people are using water in Brandon, the first graphic there is, that is water bills for, again, I, we just looked at January 2017 through August of 2019. And I know 17 was a big year, so we're kind of hoping, you know, in terms of water sales. So we're kind of hoping that 2018 and 2019 averaged that out for the purpose of looking at these statistics. But, so what the show is, is the blue portion of the line are users, the percentage of users in each month that used up to their winter average. If you, if you, on an individual account basis, those are the amount of people that used up to their winter average. The red are those that used somewhere between one and one and a half times their winter average. So it stands to reason that in January, February, December, even November for the most part and, and March, those lines would be almost entirely blue and red because the winter average is the average of December, January, February and March. So there are, you know, there's a few instances, mostly in industrial and commercial where a user does in, in one month will use, you know, if it's an average and, you know, one month is, is higher than the others, it's, it's going to show that they're using more than their winter average. So, so we see then in the June, July, August is when we get into users, you know, hitting one and a half to two times their winter average. All the way up, there was just a handful that used, you know, more than five times of their winter average. And so, you know, those are the folks that, that we want to, again, send a price signal to. The graphic on the right is, is set up the same way in terms of percentage. The blue is up to the winner, percent up to the winner average, red is up to one and a half times the winner average, but that is gallons billed. So, you know, the first graphic is the number of bills. The second graphic is the amount of water that was billed. And if you want to think in terms of how much more are people using in, you know, every month as compared to what they use in the winter, you could see how that varies. Any questions on that? So here is another chart or two charts that show, that focus on June and July usage. So the June bar is in blue, the July is in red, and what these are showing are, are the percentage of accounts of all users using again, one and a half times their winter average to, we already go up to 10 ti, or we go all the way up to 10 times the winter average. And so I show this to you because the next one, I'm just going to show residential. So this is just all users for, only for the year of 2018. For the year of 2018, this is all users, a percentage of accounts exceeding their winter peaking factor by a certain factor, and then percentage of water sales exceeding their account by a particular factor. And then this, which is kind of hard to see, hopefully on your handout, it's, it's, you can see it all right, but the ghost bars here, the, the white bars that are outlined by blue or red are the, the lines from the previous slide that showed all accounts, percent of all accounts exceeding. And then the, the filled in bars showed just for residential users, the percentage of accounts exceeding, you know, one and a half to 10 times winter water use on the left. And then on the right is the, is the percentage of water again exceeding. And so what you can see here is that, you know, by far, it's the residential users that are exceeding their, their, their winter water use. Any questions on that? Okay. So I guess before we move to water rate design, I just wanted to get a, if anybody has any thoughts they'd like to share on conservation in terms of price signal, and, and again, this wraps really well into the rate design discussion, but just before that, you know, what is the, what is your feeling of the, how much we need to conserve? Do you, do you have a sense of, you know, how good of a job the city is already doing versus where you need to go?
Well, I don't know how much of an, of an impact we've made with the water conservation because of the last two summers have been wet. So it's a little hard to tell. And in 2017, that's when we were having all of the problems with the high usage. So it's hard to tell. But I, I am in favor of charging the bigger users more. I, I just think that they need to, that's, you know, if they choose to do that, well, I think that's.
Sure, sure.
Do we think I'm going back beyond 17? What did it look like in like 15, 12, start of water usage? I mean, but it seems as though the curve is going down in the 19. I don't know if that's just because it rained a lot or if it's because the conservation's working, but.
Well, I think 19's usage is significantly lower than historical, just due to the rain. Cause we've only hit, we've only been over a million gallons a day a couple of times all summer, I think. I remember.
This year?
Yeah, over a million.
Wow. But that historical build usage, that's really interesting. If our population has been going up, which it has, it appears that the usage was going down on that one slide.
Just, just the last 10 years though.
Yeah, 18, 18 was, was pretty significant until August because we had the well that went down. And then 17 was pretty significant until we put the water in banning place in August. So we can certainly go back and look at 15, 16.
Did it have a banning place then?
We had voluntary water restrictions in 15 and 16. We can certainly go back and look at those. But up until this year, it wasn't uncommon to hit, you know, one 5, one 6 million gallons per day on a summer day.
So this chart does show it pretty well, right?
Overall, right. I mean, 17 you can see was, you know, not, it was a little above the line, but the overall trend was downward. And you would expect as you're growing, you know, those are new homes, I would guess for the most part, they're going to have the low flow fixtures. So you would expect water use for those homes to, to be already conserving to some degree.
But they have new yards.
But they have big yards?
Or, or new yards.
New yards, right. And so they water, yeah. Do you have good participation like on your rebate program and are those being successful? No?
No, it's pretty low. We had 15,000 reserved for and I think we're only up to 3,500 that are being taken out.
But I, you know, I had a number of people say this year that we never turn our sprinklers on.
Yeah.
So it's, it's hard to judge it.
Yeah.
And our conservation program is pretty.
Yeah. It's only a couple years.
Pretty what, did you say?
Pretty new.
But I would say, back to your original question about the conservation, I'm not sure how much further it's going to be able to be taken. I mean, I think we're still going to try to perform that, but just the sense that I get of this town, it's, it's not going to take over the town and, and everybody's going to quit watering because I'm sitting up here preaching to conserve water. We've made some inroads, but I don't know how much further they could be pushed. My sense of the community is if they want to water, their damn well get them water.
Okay. Yep. Yep. Well, as you implement.
So I, I think that was your original question about conservation, how much further you can take it. And I don't know how, how much further we can successfully take it. Brian, Christina?
I don't think so. I think you're odd even is probably the best you're going to be able to implement and then offering some rebates as they, as they've been doing to try to get people to.
I think we're still going to try, but.
We'll, we'll try. And I, I think if it's a normal summer, more people are going to water and there'd be more of an incentive to get those newer controllers that would, that would promote conservation, whereas now they just said it, forget it, and they forget about it. And it might, if the sprinklers are running in the rain because it's the day. But if they get those more updated controllers and if, because right now, there's really no incentive to get those.
Well, of course it takes a big effort too because that is part of the incentive is I need to upgrade my system, so I just got to be fine.
Yep. And, and that would come along with an increasing block schedule if, you know, that first year, I know when, when I first got my house, it was the first time I'd ever had a sprinkler. So I, I watered my lawn for the first month and then I got the bill. And I haven't watered since. So I, I think that's going to take effect if we, if we increase the rates in an increasing block. If you look at some of this stuff, it's kind of shocking that somebody, there's some folks that are using 10 times more water in the summer than they do in the winter. I mean, that to me is, is huge.
It's pretty much.
Yes.
And they don't care.
So, and I, I think most of our houses that are built have been built after the, the low flow fixtures were in place. Now granted, I'm sure that there's some black market stuff out there that still has the five gallons per flush toilets. So I don't, I don't necessarily think we're going to see a huge reduction in that because the majority of our homes, except in the core here, were built post 90. So they should have those in. So I don't, I don't see a huge amount of efforts there, even, even if we replace every toilet in town. It's the wa, it's the watering in the summer.
I will say though, this chart from 2000 to today. I will say, though, this chart, from 2000 to today, we have added people to count. So that should go up, not down, right?
Yeah, if, if people, if, if there weren't the, you know, the low-flow fixture factor and all that.
So that's what Tom thinks, or this is just low-flow?
Most likely, yep. Yep.
Say again, what com- what comprises this? Why does that not go?
Well, the low-flow fixtures that have, you know, been installed in the new homes is, that's why, when, and we see this a lot, when the community's still growing, but water use is either flat or slightly declining, it's because those newer homes just are set up to not use as much water. But like, like you said, they still have, they still have lawns to water, new lawns. But in terms of winter water use, it's compressed. It's down from 7,500 gallons in 2002 was the normal number, and now we're seeing around 4,000. I don't know if it was for your community, but region-wide, that's the number we saw. And your community is at 4,000 today, so that's...
Well, we were building up your homes, too, and they were building 40, 50, so I mean, it was different. It's two of the lawn water.
Yep.
Two falls without their growth, their water usage just going down. But I agree with you, Mayor, it'll, it'll know how much more we can squeeze, we can actually drive.
Well, and I, I think Brian's right. If you implement a conservation-oriented rate structure, people will be incentivized to, oh, what are those rebates again? You know, they'll, they'll, they'll pay attention.
That's a very incorrect way of saying, we're going to drill you if you water your lawn.
Yeah.
God, you should be in this chair, or you should run for office.
You know, the other thing on that, that chart that showed that graph, that was percentage of water billed. Well, as, as...
Oh, sorry.
Commercial institutional is increasing.
I saw that.
Your residential's a percentage is going to decrease, because it's not looking at total water consumed. It's just a percentage of the bill.
Right, yeah, sorry. I was focusing on the residential, yep.
Well, do we have a graph that shows total water consumed over that same period of time?
We can, we can convert this, yeah, it's a total.
See, that would be interesting to see.
Your water us- oh, sorry, go ahead.
From, from a, just a general water usage.
Do you know what that looks like? I would go, you know, your residential users are the majority of your water use, so...
The, yeah, your residential customer.
Yeah. So...
You look at 2002, where you had eighty, what, 82, 83% was residential usage? And then commercial institutional was down below 10, what it is today, or at least in 17. You're looking at 15% versus 78-ish.
So really, the total water used from the, it's just a percentage.
Based on customer type.
Yep.
Right? So...
That, that makes more sense.
Well, right, because if you...
That was blowing, blowing my mind before her saying that we're down from 2,000. I just couldn't comprehend that, but...
No.
Your per capita use...
Yeah.
That's the number your population's growing, your code, or your capital.
One of the more interesting facts, I think, you brought up. Regionally, average water consumption of a household is 7,500 gallons?
In 2002, that's what we saw around the region. That's the year...
Is it today?
Today, it's, it's closer to five around the region.
Oh.
4,800 to 5,000, and you're at 4,000 for residential, so...
So in 2002, it was 7,500?
Yeah, 2,002, yeah, sorry. That's when we started do- I don't know if you've seen our rate survey that we do, but that's when we started doing it, and we started with 5, 7,500, and then we shrunk it to 6,000. And now we should probably take an even lower number.
Hmm, very good.
Okay, so as we talk about then, I, you know, what we, what we, some thoughts, you know, having to do with your rate structure and where we go from here. So, this is your current structure. You have fixed monthly charges that are varied by meter size. They are generally in line with the capacity charges that AWWA recommends in terms of increasing as, as the, you know, flow capable of going through the meter size increases. If you see, you know, by far, you have three-quarter inch meters in the system. Eighty-one percent of your meters are, are three-quarter inch. And you're, then you have the, as you know, the constant block volumetric rate. So the same price is paid for each thousand gallons of water sold for any type of user. So this is where we're starting today. So the things we want to think about as we look at potential adjustments to your rate structure, you know, we want, we don't want to overcomplicate it. We, we want to make it, you know, easy for the consumers to understand, easy to administer on staff's part. We want it to, of course, generate the revenue that you need. You know, even though, even in anticipation of people potentially using less water due to that price signal, you know, revenue generation is, is the biggest thing. And we want to, you know, make it fair, equitable, and defendable for, to make sure we're treating people fairly between the user classes. So the questions then that we have, as we look at this, are, you know, fixed charges versus variable charges. You know, how much do you want to generate through your fixed rate versus your variable? How do you, you know, want to vary that fixed rate by increasing meter size? What are we going to call baseline consumption? If we look at inclining block structure, we have to establish, you know, what is our, where we're going to start? Like, what that first tier cutoff is going to be? What are we going to call excessive use? Is there an excessive use? Is there a point at which you just really want to stick it to somebody if they're using, you know, that much water? Is, is that something you want to consider or not? And then software capabilities. So, we know the software that you have is good. It's not necessarily set up to do individual, what we call, refer to as like a budget billing type of rate. Have you had any feedback from them on that?
I have had some where they believe they can do some kind of multiplier over their winter average. She was going to check into it more. I have not heard back since, but I believe there's capabilities there. If it's already in place, and we wouldn't necessarily have to pay for it, but if, even if we have to have them write the software, it could potentially be a fee. I don't know what that would be at this point.
Sure, okay. One of the options that we had, we had discussed, you know, previously with staff, was just a straightforward two-tier type of rate, where you pay, you know, a rate up to some multiplier of your winter average. Let's say one and a half times your winter average is a certain rate, and anything over that is a second rate. That, you know, is kind of what some of the bigger cities in the industry are going to, where it's basically, it's a customized rate, you know, per user. It's based on your actual usage in your home, which, you know, is, you probably can't get any more fair than that. The, the drawbacks to something like that are, you know, if somebody is already an irresponsible water user in the winter, then they just get more room in the summer, you know. So there, it's, it's not perfect, but it is, you know, not necessarily an easy thing to just implement. That's, it's something that's still being explored. But it's an option that we're looking at, because it, it, it would be a good option if the software could do it.
I don't get it. How can you be an irresponsible water user in the winter?
You got leaks.
Yep.
You got toilets that are leaking.
Yep, you don't.
Care about, so they increase your usage.
You just don't care about, so you don't?
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, it's probably...
Or you have teenagers.
Right.
Yeah.
Say again?
Or you have teenagers.
It probably doesn't fall in the irresponsible category, though.
Well...
That's going to be a tough argument, though, because you could have a house full of kids with a high winter average, and then when they go to water their lawn in the summer, it's economical for them to do that. We can lay it right next door, who uses hardly anything, but has pride and joy in watering her lawn. At the end of the year, so he uses less water.
Yes.
She's paying a lot more for that resource than her neighbors.
Exactly. That's, that's the concern with something like that, because you, you will have those very, you know, those ends of the spectrum. So, but it is one of the, the options that we'll, we'll go through with you. In addition to that, we'll look at inclining block, and we'll look at constant block as well. But we're going to start looking at your current fixed charge. So, in the, in the second column is your current monthly fixed charge. In the third column is the, is the, what we call the equivalent ratio between, so, the ratio between the one and a half meter to a one-inch meter is, is two. It's the price for the one and a half inch meter is double the price for a one-inch meter. And so, right now, your structure is set up, you know, very nicely with round numbers in terms of how those, those meter charges are calculated. AWWA equivalent meter capacity is shown in that fourth column. And that, I, I believe that's how, you know, your structure was probably set up originally, according to that. Or they use that in rounded, which, which is fine. But, you know, so one of the, you know, one of the considerations that I'm showing you here is if you wanted to, you know, have absolutely defensible rates, you would, you might want to consider readjusting those charges to align with AWWA equivalent meter ratio, just because that's, that's kind of the standard. People do it all kinds of ways, so you don't necessarily have to. But I just wanted to show you what would happen if you were to take all of your customer-related charges from your administrative budget, excluding debt. And if you were to divide that up amongst all of your meters by size, there would be a sizable increase in, in the fixed charge for the system. So fixed charges are great for revenue stability. They're not great for affordability in terms of they hit the little old lady as hard as they hit the, the big family. And so, this is not a recommendation. It's an illustration on there where you could see how much those, those meter charges would increase. And because they're not exactly aligned currently with AWWA meter equivalent, some of the meters' charges would go up significantly more than others. But basically, what, what the, the rates in the second to the last column represent is a $2.72 charge for customer-type of costs, billing, mailing, you know, office equipment, that type of thing, and then $11.65 per meter equivalent charge. So, that would generate a lot of revenue through, what did I have that? 41% of your total revenue requirements through the fixed charge. It's generally recommended that that be 30 or less. So, again, not a recommendation, but just showing you what that would be if you were to kind of buy the book structure your fixed charge.
And this is assuming doing it all at once, right?
Right, yep.
Or you could phase it in.
You could phase it in. You know, so it comes a question of how, how much revenue are you comfortable generating from that fixed charge? And something that will factor into that is how you want to deal with a surcharge for, you know, your upcoming debt. You know, if, if that becomes a fixed charge, then that would, you know, play into this as well.
So right now, we're at the 21.7, and it's recommended to be a 30?
Right, 30, 30 or less. Getting more than 30 becomes burdensome. But it's, like I said, it's great for revenue stability. So if we, if we looked at doing just a portion of the fixed charge, so, so in the second column there, I have just doing all of the customer-related costs again, and then 50% of the capacity-related costs, whereas in the previous example, I had 100% of the capacity-related costs as well. That would be an 8.9% increase to the lowest meter charge. It would be an 80% increase to that one and a half inch meter, 45% to the two-inch, and 20 to the three-inch. So, you know, again, those are, those are big increases. And, you know, you may decide, we want our policy to be, we stick with the one and a half inch meter is twice the one, you know, that's fine, that can be a policy decision you make. I just wanted to show you what the equivalent meter, you know, if, if you were to realign those rates according to the AWWA standard, that's what they would look like. And then that would generate 24.5% of your total rate revenue requirement. And in the last column... Sarah? Oh, that's on the, okay, sorry. So that's the same situation, except, okay, sorry. The third from the end column is, is running all the charges out on a per-equivalent meter basis, similar to what you have now. Another consideration in rate setting is oftentimes, I mentioned, the, the cost associated with billing, being $2.72. A lot of times, those are charged per bill, because really, the big apartment complex bill probably takes as much time as the residential bill. And so, those will sometimes be a per-bill charge with the balance of those being a capacity-based charge. And so, if we were to mix those two type of equivalent meter standards, the second to the last column would be the, the rates that would result from that. And as you can see, the six-inch meter charge would go down if we realigned with the rates in that scenario. So I guess, well, I'll move to the next slide here, and then I'll ask you the question. So debt surcharge. So you have some debt that will be coming online. And I believe, has it been your practice to do a fixed debt surcharge in the past, or how have you done that?
Uh, for water, we've done variable. We've left the base be, we don't have any debt in water.
Right.
And the water treatment, when that was done, that was not a surcharge.
Okay.
No, we just added the rates.
We added the rates.
Okay. Would you do a surcharge for, for the upcoming debt, the, the water tower debt?
We'll need to take a look at that, because with, with, depends on how much we want to eat up of our debt capacity in those. If it's a surcharge and a fixed rate, it doesn't count towards your debt capacity.
Okay.
If it's a variable rate, it does. So, we need to take a look at that and see where we're going to be sitting with our debt.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that'll be some input that we'll want to consider then, you know, for our alternatives is, you know, how you want to treat the water, the future water plant. And we can just make an assumption that you, that you would surcharge it, I guess, or that you wouldn't, I guess. It would be up to you to just...
You'd surcharge the sewer right now, Brian, is that it?
We, we surcharge the Big Suit lift station.
So the debt on the...
Which is on the sewer?
Yep.
Yes. Total currently 4.95 per month, per bill for the debt service on the lift station.
So if you looked at, for instance, and these are just some really rough numbers, if you looked at that $20 million water plant, if we did a debt, if we did a surcharge on that, that would be somewhere around $26, $27 a month per customer.
If you did it on a fixed basis?
If you did it on a fixed basis. It's about $1 million of debt service a year. So, previous councils have always taken the approach, we don't want to necessarily pass that fixed cost on to the little old lady, as an example, on the corner, who's not a big user, who's using the most water, should pay the most for whatever the improvement has been. Banks and finance state really likes to see the surcharge, because it's stable. There's no, there's no fluctuation. You know, if you put it on, if you put it on the variable rate, that may change, depending on how much water you bill out.
Now, in the sewer, we took it out, the base rate was high for the sewer, so we were able to lower the base rate to create the surcharge. But if you're talking $27 a month, obviously, we can't take it out of the base rate. It would just have to be a fixed amount.
Well, and again, keep in mind, I mean, it might not be, $20 million might not be the number. But for the purpose of discussion, that, yeah. Okay, so, yeah. Oh, okay, yeah. All right. So this will be an area, then, that we will, you know, really be considering affordability impacts. Because like you said, at 27, I think I had calculated with all of this, you know, 40, up to $41 a month, potentially, roughly, with, with all that debt. So, so would you like to see us do at least a portion in variable as we model it, or? Well, and, and I guess I would agree with the, the thought that, you know, having the little old lady pay the same thing as the, you know, a business in town, just because she has the same size meter is...
Well, and, you know, we've got those variable base rates based upon meter size, so that, you know, $26, $27 a month was for, didn't take into account those...
The bigger meters.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, most of your meters are the three-quarter inch, so, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a big thing to bite off.
Do we have any charge business more for their water usage, or is it just based on their meter size? Based on the meter size, the cost per thousand gallons is the same for everybody regardless of how much you use. So, I don't think we have any six-inch meters.
No, there wasn't any.
I think threes, I think three-inch, we have, we might have a couple of fours.
And a three-inch meter would be required to do what?
Well, it'd be, you know, if we go right now, it'd be nine times, so... It'd be 210 bucks, 200 bucks a month.
No, I'm saying...
Probably lots, yes.
Uh, apartment buildings, uh, some commercial, eh, I don't know if any commercial, industrial wood.
And it does go...
Oh, if you looked at, uh, Marmen, uh, the motels are probably threes. I think maybe twos.
Marmen might be three.
Marmen's probably a three-inch.
Because they use water in their bathroom?
Lose water in their cutting operation. So, you know, a Laverne truck, you know, Spartan... Are fours?
Marmen has a four.
Okay, so...
And usually, they'll do like a high, high flow, low flow, so they'll have a four-inch and a three-quarter inch.
Yep. They'll have a three-quarter inch for the domestic restroom usage. You know, if you look at that, a four-inch meter, you know, that $26, $27 a month surcharge, we multiply that by 16 to get what their budget base would be. Yeah, it'd be 430 bucks a month.
So I guess the, the input that I would like, um, at this point from you is, you know, if we think about how you currently have your, your meters structured in terms of, you know, like I said, it's clean, um, you know, to go 1, 2, 4, 9, 16, 36. It doesn't necessarily correlate, um, exactly with flow. It's relatively, you know, um, in the ballpark. And so I'm just curious, you know, do you like what you have? Or do you want us to realign them with the meter equivalents to, to be kind of the industry standard? Knowing that, you know, some of the, um, you know, there, there would be, the changes to different meters by size would be, would vary.
Who's going to use a 1.5 inch? Who would that be?
Um, some commercial, uh, multifamilies, you know, fourplex, eightplex. You know, you get up into the larger, the 32, the 64, I'm thinking they've only got twos. I don't think you're going to see too many single-family residential go with one and a half. Curse it. Used, used to be you didn't see too many single families with an inch.
Right, yeah.
But that's becoming more common.
Yeah, no, they're still mostly at the three-quarter inch. It's just those one and a half inch meters, and you wouldn't have to change that. Like you pointed out earlier, you wouldn't have to do that all in one year. You could do it over four or five years if you wanted to realign, um, you know, at some point down the road.
Okay, so the difference between a one and a half and a three is just basically we can push more water per, that doesn't mean that they necessarily do push more.
Right, right.
So it doesn't make sense to me to penalize somebody that has a bigger meter but doesn't use that much water, or is there always a correlation with a bigger meter and they're going to use more?
There's usually a correlation. If you were building something and you wouldn't put in a two-inch meter in a single family because you wouldn't need the capacity, and it's just the cost of the meter is significantly higher.
It's a, it's a readiness-to-serv argument, you know, they have the ability. It's incentive to get a properly-sized meter on your building.
My preference would be, um, more on the variable side where it's based on what they actually use and, and try to keep the fixed cost lower. Because I, I think the people that use water should be very firm, why should we grant them?
What about Grant?
Yeah.
But Grant's going to be penalized with water in her lawn in the summer, that, I mean, that's the...
Or he may go to a company and use some...
If you do a flat, I mean, you look, I mean, back in the day, people shared bathwater. I don't know that we're necessarily supporting conservation by, by doing it on winter-based average because you're not, you're not really accomplishing anything. They do what they do, they're teenagers, they wash tons of laundry every day, and then they get cheap watering in the summer for their lawn. People that are really going to be poor, people that are very proud of their lawn are going to water their lawn for a season.
But overall, maybe they use less water in a year.
Right.
I, yeah, I'd like to look at like the whole year, I don't have to do that.
Okay.
Well, you could, but on the, on the same side, if you've got a family of five and their water usage is constant, you know, they don't water their lawn, and you draw the, the number that would kick them into the higher usage, that's, I don't think that's fair either. Because they're not, they're not watering their lawn, their water usage is constant. They're not the ones who are peak, you know, increasing the peak demand in the summertime.
But overall, they're using more water a year. It's not my problem if they have five kids or two.
That's kind of a personal choice.
But it's, it's not our problem either if the little old lady on the corner wants to water the heck out of her yard.
It's based, it'd be based on a multiplier though, so you have your, it's, it, two times your winter average. I mean, if she's using two times her winter average, that little gal who's using three gallons in the winter, or the other one that's using 10,000 gallons, it's still based on two times that winter average. That's what we're...
Yeah.
Looking at, if you're basing it off the winter average, it's going to be some multiplier.
Well, like, I, I think back to my build, it was, um, I guess, the last meeting. I mean, I watered my lawn once, and it was like in August, I think it was. And my usage, usage reflected two and a half times the month before from watering my lawn once. So I, most rates would be absolutely phenomenal if I would've watered four, five times that much.
Well, let's talk, let's talk about variable rates then, since it's not, it's, I think, you know, there's some points that I can make that would maybe mitigate this concern about the little old lady. Um, I'm, I'm taking longer than I intended here, so we'll just get right into the, the stuff you really want to hear about. So the, the things that we, we looked at in terms of, for discussion today, where they looked at two-tier inclining block for all users, which is what we've talked about here, some multiplier, um, times your winter water use. We looked at a three-tier inclining block user for all users with a single, uh, a single rate structure applied to everybody with some blocks. Um, and then we looked at a combination, three-tier inclining block with constant block for non-residential users. And so I'll show you what those look like. So, uh, but to start, I mentioned earlier, we have to talk about what's baseline water use. We kind of need to have a definition of what we call, what we would call the usage within the tiers. Um, it's kind of standard to call, um, tier one being essential use and to cap it essentially what people, what the little old lady needs to use in the winter. And if we have, um, you know, two or more tiers and we structure those rates appropriately, she will pay less in the winter for that essential use, which, you know, could balance out what she pays more in the summer. You know, that's the idea there is to keep, is to, um, you know, keep that essential water use at the, at the lowest price possible. A lot of times, we'll look at tier two then as, and, and this isn't, this doesn't apply. This is a, a traditional inclining block, so this isn't anymore talking about the, you know, one and a half times winter water use. We'll call tier two efficient outdoor water use. You know, what is a responsible amount of watering in a typical home in your community? Capture that in tier two to, you know, to allow people to still do watering. You don't want them to stop. You want them to water, but to do it, um, prudently and that, you know, we can keep that rate fair for that. Beyond that is when we start to see typically inefficient outdoor water use. And then sometimes a city will add a fourth tier that it just, you know, is the outright penalty for people that just need to stop. So, um, as we're looking at this, you need to decide, you know, what do you, what do you want to call essential use? Is it just what the little old lady uses in the winter? Or is, is it that plus a little bit of watering for her to water her garden in the summer? Do we, do we want to define that as essential, or, or do we just stick to the indoor use? So one of the ways that we look at, um, responsible lawn watering is to look at guidelines from the Conservation Service in, in the area. And so SDSU says that, um, one to one and a half inches per week during July and August will maintain a, a good lawn for you. So we, using that, um, as a guide and looking at your parcel data, um, the average size property in town and the median size, we came up with some just kind of round numbers for what we could consider responsible outdoor water use. So for the median-sized property, um, again, which would be, you know, at the 50th percentile in the city, um, it looks like about 26, a little over 26,000 gallons per month would be still a responsible, um, amount of water use. That, I thought that number seemed high, too. So the, the assumptions I made here were that impervious surface area for the parcel would be 40%. That may or may not be what you actually, um, see in your city on average, so I don't know if that... But that's why, so that's saying, you know, 60% of your, of your parcel could be watered. So putting an inch, an inch and a half of water on that, um, for 17 and a half weeks every year. For the average-sized property, it was 88,000 gallons, so that's a lot. I, I feel like, um, the average-sized property looked a little big to me, but, um, that, that might be, you know, you, that might be typical property size in Brandon.
Not residential, not, I mean, not unless it's a brand-new lawn. And then we'll sometimes see it, which is pretty, that's still excessive.
So, so maybe, you know, in the interest of time, I can get some better numbers on that. But for the purpose of discussion today, we're going to pretend that 26,000 gallons per month is reasonable lawn watering. So, okay, and I just want to, the statement I wanted to stop and make here is that I'm going to show you some rates. And what happens sometimes is when we show numbers, and I do it myself, I see a number, and then I do some more work on it, it changes, and it's like, well, wasn't it just that, you know? Just, I want you to just compare these in relative terms because once we decide on, you know, some rate structure options that you really want to see what they mean, we'll put those into the revenue adequacy model, and then we will come up with some real rates that, that represent what would be needed to meet all of your revenue requirements. So this is just a revenue-neutral analysis for the purpose of comparison. So for the two-tier inclining block, um, approach, if we said it was one and a half times the winter average, maybe we'd want it to be two or three or whatever. But for the, for this illustration, we did one and a half times. Um, that would capture 83% of the water use in tier two and 17% in tier one for your residential users. And I can't read that, 20% in tier one for non-residential and 74, 26 and 74. So the, the rate on a revenue-neutral basis to compare with the other options, I'm going to show you, the tier one rate would be 4.27 per thousand and the tier two rate would be 5.34, okay? If we, if we compare that then to looking at a traditional inclining block structure for the users, let's say, okay, 4,000 gallons is average winter water use for a resident. Let's give them the benefit of the doubt and let's give them six, you know, in that first tier. And then if we, if we add 26 on to that, or, you know, 24, assuming there's some, um, rainfall, so that 26 doesn't account for rainfall that would occur, the 26,000 gallons doesn't account for rainfall that would occur in the summer. So let's say 24,000 gallons is what we're going to allow for lawn watering in tier two. So we, we cap that second tier at 30,000 gallons. The rates are shown on the right there. So because, because we are increasing each of those tiered rates by 25%, we're able to lower that tier one rate as compared to what we were, um, showing in, in the first example. And so that's where the little old lady benefits. The smaller we make the tier one, um, volume, and the larger the step we put between the tiers, the smaller we're able to keep that tier one charge to, to the benefit of, um, users like the little old lady. So then the third, um, alternative that we looked at here was, again, if we set up an inclining block with 6,000 in the first tier, um, the 30, up to 30 in the second tier, but we treated the non-residential user differently, um, the rates, um, are shown on the right there. So the tier one rate for residential users would be 4.42, we'd increase that again by 25% and then the third tier by 25%. Now, the reason that this is, is beneficial is because, um, the, the tier structure on the left does not do a good job of reflecting water use by those non-residential users. And so it's really not fair to subject them to the same cutoffs in terms of tier pricing. I think, you know, would you want to take an inclining block structure for all users? You would probably want to consider a separate structure for non-residential just so you could customize it to their actual water use. Otherwise, you're going to be, um, potentially unfairly charging them. So there's a lot of different things we can do with this kind of option. We can add a fourth tier, um, we could add a fifth tier if you wanted. Um, we can adjust those steps, the, the last column in that, um, table at the top right there. Um, that just reflects, you know, how much we increase the rate between tiers. Minimum recommended is 25% to, to be effective. We have done 30, we have done 40, and again, that comes back to how strongly, or how strong you want that signal to be.
Where are we at now? How much are you, do you compare it to the 4.27 now?
The 4.59, yeah, yes.
Where, 4.59?
4.59, yeah. So, so the 5.14 there that you see for non-residential, that is comparable to your 4.59 today just based on, um, the 2020 budget and projected, um, debt, you know, new revenue requirements for 2020.
What about for the tier one? Where are we at now if we compare it to 4.27?
Um, your current rates today, you, you just have the 4.59.
Okay, okay, I see.
Yep.
It's just across the board?
Yep, across the board.
And just so you know, I, I won't give a name, but we do, there are commercial that use that lawn water. I have one up here that their winter average is 38,000 gallons, but in August, they use 84,000. So I just, I want to let you know that this option three, I, is it easier? Yeah, it's easier, but your non-residential in this option is going to get 5.14 per thousand no matter what and not really get dinged for their lawn watering.
Right. What we could do in that instance, if you did want to have the constant block, is we could set the, the rate for the non-residential at the tier two rate. You know, the lawn watering wait, rate for, you know, we could, we could do some, we could play around with that a little bit in terms of rate design. Or, you know, you could, you could have a separate, um, inclining tier structure, you know?
Different one for commercial?
Different one for commercial, simply because six, you want to do that?
Yeah. I think, I, to me, there needs to be more cushion between the tiers because, I mean, if we go back to Brandon, average user is 4,000, and you make 26,000 water your lawn, that's six and a half times that, that average amount. So if you're saying you're going to start to get socked as soon as you go, you know, a time and a half over your winter average, well, pretty much anybody that waters your lawn is instantly going up to the highest tier the first time you water your lawn.
Yeah, so you're, you're referring to, in, oops, in this first, in this first example, yeah. So you would want the one and a half to be more like a two or a three, or two and a half, something like that?
I guess we'd have to look at our, see how many people are actually, because I think we need to penalize the infusers. Um, I don't know that one and a half times is an infuser.
Right, yeah.
Or deserving of a penalty.
Well, you know, it becomes a balance because you, you want people to water, you still want people to buy water. You just don't want them to push your capacity, right? So, you know, the, the beauty, the, the thing about, that we're able to do though, when you have the two tiers, is we can charge the lower rate in the winter, you know, if they stay under their one and a half times their winter average, they're paying less than they would have been paying, paying on a constant block basis. So again, it's kind of a trade-off. Your, your bill could go down in the, in the winter and then up in the summer and the average. We could have a bigger, we could have a bigger jump, that's what you're saying, have a bigger jump. Right, yeah, if we go back to. Right, so here, so it's a thousand, is that 1,100 or 1,083 accounts were up to one and a half, they stayed within the one and a half times their winter use in July. And it looks like 1471 stayed within their winter watering, one and a half times their winter water use in June. Pardon? That was 2018. Out of, how much, 30, 30, oh, residential accounts are 30.
The thing about their rates going down in the winter, they won't acknowledge that. They'll never realize that they went down. Yeah, and so when we jack them up in the summer, they're going to notice that. So we also have to be cognizant of the politics of this, too.
Right, yeah, that's a good point, that's a good point. So they would pay the lower rate up to one and a half times and it would just be the water over that was the higher block. Okay, I didn't, I should have pointed that out. Well, okay, the other thing you could look at is, so I said the peaking factor for residential class as a whole was 3.2. So anybody over 3.2 is peaking up even higher than the average. At, at three or above three? So above three would affect 345 accounts to some, to varying levels. Well. Based on my assumptions, which are suspect. Right, that's no rainfall.
That's, the only water your lawn is getting is coming out of your sprinklers.
Well, we had a couple of years where we wouldn't. That seems like a lot.
So it would allow some.
Allow for watering if, if you were not getting rainfall, right? It's like, well, I can put 26,000 gallons of water in my lawn a month, but there's no rainfall. Well, that's a lot. So, but, so yeah, so at like three times, you know, that's 12,000 gallons a month and then anything more than 12,000 gallons a month, we would, we would jump a, a rate here, yes. Which that number is, is 19% of the population that would be affected?
But, sorry, which number?
3.5.
A three and a half, yep, 19%. On the June, based on the June bills and 10% based on the July. For refer, oh, sorry.
Three options or tiers, are you looking to see whether they want to do the multiplier or do the block? Or the.
Yeah.
I mean, is that really what they kind of need to decide on, whether we want to do the multiplier or the winter average? Or do we want to do a zero to 6,000 and then 6,001 to 30,000?
Or is it zero to eight, or you know, what is the right number? Yeah, right, basically, I mean, if the multiplier is viable with your software, that's why we wanted to continue to look at both because it might not be.
Right.
Um, for reference, he just calculated for me. So Bozeman, Montana is a very conservation oriented community, very, much so. And they calculated that 14,000 gallons a month is their reasonable lawn watering. So, just for reference, you know, 26 is, that's why I thought 26 was too high, but I just went with that number for illustration.
So you have to look at, if you do zero to six, you do 6,001 to 20,000. So we just have to look at probably some of our users, what the residential is using in the winter. I know there's some out there that are using 15,000 gallons.
In the winter?
In the winter, because they have a family of five or whatever. So you just have to kind of set, if you use like the number two option or number three option is probably more because you would have a different tier for your.
Right, yeah, I think.
Different tier for your commercial. But if you use that option, then the, you just have to set that 30,000 at a number where we're not hitting our average user.
And then if you have a single person who waters their lawn a lot, that 15,000 number, probably, right? Because really ultimately it boils down to how much water people are using per house. It doesn't, we don't care how.
Yeah, and we're currently working on a bill stopper for indoor leaks. And there's a lot, and we get constant calls on it, you know, my consumption went up or, you know, and it's, check your toilets, and now we have toilet tablets to offer those to, to those. But there are things you can do indoors to make sure that your house is functioning properly. Right, we can set, currently we can set our software to bill out zero to 12,000 at this rate, 12,001 to whatever at this rate, we currently can do that.
We'd probably do it just like we do with water meters. We do with water or sewer consumption now.
Right.
You would estimate when you have a new user come online, and, yeah, yeah. Um, I did, I jumped to this graphic because this, I think, is, you know, gives you even a bigger range of, of options here. And this was, again, just to kind of illustrate how that, structuring that first tier changes, what you can charge in that first tier. And so if I heard you right, we're talking about a scenario where we put 12,000 in the first tier. And are we also looking at a scenario where we have a smaller number like six or some? I, I think it would be interesting for you to have a couple to compare. Six, okay.
Yeah, you have.
Well, I believe there's some others in 15,000 and we can, I can certainly look that up on what.
So if 15,000, you take, my wife and I agreed about 4,000. We've got a speech yard.
I'm going to look up where you watered.
Yeah, you'll have to go back.
Go back on here. 22,000, 22,000.
20,000. So we have 0.4,000. If it was all, you know, 20,000 for us. So you take the person with the 15,000 on average. 35,000. And we just be talking about the 20,000? Just a lot of grass, not necessarily what the, this is.
That's why you made, if you want to do the multiplier based upon the winter average.
Yeah.
That would take into account the normal usage for each household. If you exceed whatever that magic number is, maybe you can pay a higher rate. Pick an arbitrary number, arbitrary, let's say it's 20,000, 20, zero to 20,000 is the base rate. 20 to 40,000 is one and a half, anything over 40, whatever. You're going to hit people that may use 20,000, 21,000 every month. And they're, all of their toilets may be working. They may, they may have 100% conservation in their house, and they're still going to hit 21,000.
But it's still, it's all based on how much of your household, if you, if you choose to have six kids. You also choose to have a big truck, you also choose to buy more clothes, you also choose, right? So why, why do we care except for just how much each house is used?
Yeah.
It's not, that, that person with the six kids isn't causing a spike in watering. They're not wanting the watering, it is causing a spike in summer.
There's still a lot, I mean, I don't think it's going to be fair to charge one neighbor three times the water per gallon or thousand gallons compared to the other neighbor. Because the other neighbor has a lot of kids that do laundry there. I mean, that's literally the situation.
Well, laundry, I think laundry is more important than green grass. Of course, sorry.
All right, well, well, we can look at these different situations since there doesn't seem to be a strong consensus. Okay. I, the, the last thing I'll say about this is, um, the thing that I, about the 12,000 gallons in tier one, that, that kind of structure is looked at as it doesn't give people the ability to reduce their water bill if they want. If it's, you know, if we cut it off at some smaller number and, because, you know, part of the, part of the issue with affordability is giving people flexibility. And so if we can structure it where it allows them to make the choice to conserve and stay in tier one, that, you know, can be a benefit. Yeah, I think we'll look at that, but those will be the things that I think I'll point out in, in the future. Also the, you know, we'll be able to keep that 6,000 gallon tier one rate lower, you know, for the, the people that don't use much. Yes, yeah, that's, yeah, the, the three tier, yeah, for, for the residential users. And since we're going to look at inclining block for commercial too, it'll, it'll be the same thing, yeah. And we might, I'll look at water use for the commercial users. What we might want to do is for meters of a certain size, have different blocks. Not to scare Christina, but that might be more, because if you have, you know, I pointed out, you have a lot of really small water users in commercial and then you have some really big ones. And so it might be, we're going to have to find a way to be fair to those big water users. We'll look at how consistent they are and, you know, what they're averaging. Because if you have a large, consistent water user on your system, that's kind of a good thing. You know, they're a reliable revenue source, and so you don't necessarily want to really hit them.
But ultimately, we wouldn't have to make asset improvements and all this, because we didn't use a lot, right?
Well, right. But your average day use, I don't think is driving the capacity increases, is it? Isn't it that peak water? Yeah, so what I'm saying is if you, if you have a 12 month of the year consistent high water user, and I don't know that you do, they're a good customer actually, you know, because you can, you can count on them for that revenue. Are you interested in a, a fourth, you know, penalty tier that, you know, you would never want anybody to hit, but?
Might not hurt to look at that.
Okay. I think it's a good idea. Pardon? No, it would just be a really punitive rate. And when we have a, a tier like that where we really don't want any water use, we don't assume any revenue from there, you know, in terms of setting the rates. We assume you'll generate your revenue from where we want people to be buying their water, so.
Yeah, because we had somebody, what, last year that hit 100 or some thousand gallons.
Yeah, I believe so.
Just.
A month?
Yeah. Which in my, it, it's excessive, even if you're doing it three times a day, 10 minutes, five. a time.
It is excessive.
No, you don't, but you've got some, you've got some side folks telling the folks they do.
That's a problem, because you got...
Well, again, they can tell them, but you're going to pay them.
Okay, I, I am sorry, I've kept you longer than I was supposed to, so I'll just real quick run through...
We keep that around to you, so it's kind of...
Well, no, this is what, this is what this is supposed to be about, I, I should have... The other things that we're going to talk about, where we're going to look at in the study, that I, that I don't need to spend a lot of time on, is we'll take into consideration 180-day operating reserve as a target to, to maintain. We'll look at, of course, what you're going to need for debt service reserve on your, on your new debt, and then we, we will look at, and we can make some recommendations as renewal, renewal and replacement reserve. You're, you're going to be in a cycle where you're, you know, investing a lot in your utility right now, so the calculations we do will probably show that you don't need to also be setting aside more money, but, but it's, it, now is the time to think about, you know, putting together a plan for how you're going to fund a replacement of those items in the future, and so that'll be a component of, of what we, what we account for here, as well as a rate stabilization reserve, we'll, we'll make a recommendation for that. That's just a reserve that can help you cushion needed rate increases in the future. And so, you know, because we're probably going to be looking at stepping into, you know, several years of rate increases, you know, we're not going to recommend excessive rate increases just to fund reserves, but it will be something that we will include in your model, so you can do that down the road.
So did I see someplace where it showed that the water, second water tower was put off?
Yeah, that was in the Capitol Pride.
On the CIP?
Is that what we're thinking?
Yeah, we're, Tammy's been working on that with, yeah, with DGR, looking at different models, so we need to sit down with her and DGR in Raleigh and figure out, give it's one or two, because DGR has concerns about the age of the water and the rest of water tower based upon their model, which doesn't try and start with that.
I think one thing that would be important is, once we get some ideas of what the surrounding cities are charging, so...
Oh, for sure.
That's important, yes.
We're competing with them.
We absolutely are competing with them.
Yep.
And I might go down 30,000, definitely.
Well, when you do that, when you do that, you should, you can handle it, it's further out of the infrastructure.
It'll be hard, yeah, they'll probably have rate increases too, but...
If they aren't at that same point where, it'll be hard for them.
It's going to be hard, but...
Yeah.
You always accuse me of being the highest one, I don't think that's true.
It's not, but if we build a 15 to 20 million dollar water treatment facility, it, it, you know, rather than that, that's, we don't have much of a choice of that, if, you know, we're, we're pushing that plant the way it is, we can dig all the wells we want to, but if we can't push it through the treatment plant, it doesn't make any sense.
That's my point, if we're at that point in our growth, our city, because other than ours, make all the comparisons you want, it's not going to be that way. But it's still going to, it's still going to affect what our, our, our routine, or that also.
Well, it, it will, you know, when, when people are looking at moving into Sioux Falls area, some, some will compare how much it costs to live here versus Harrisburg versus Steve versus Sioux Falls, we will take a look at that, but on the other side, if we don't build a treatment plant, we're going to have to free building projects, because we, we don't have any capacity, and we won't have any capacity for the city.
Yeah, we will definitely have that regional comparison, and we can probably provide some insight too, as to, you know, where some of these other cities are at, just from what we know, or we can, we can dig into some of that as well. So I think we covered what, what I needed in terms of feedback, in terms of the fixed charge revenue goal.
I mean, I think that I could jump a bit out, I could jump it to, that's not our point, our point is to try to conserve.
Well, we want them to conserve, but we're going to have to jump a some to...
Yeah.
And to think the things we necessarily want to conserve are the, of that 180-day, we'll all look at options that will make some better reserve fund, that will help us...
A bigger reserve fund? Right, yeah, the, the 180 would just be for operating just day-to-day expenses, but the rate stabilization reserve would be the one that would help. And the R and R is like a capital reserve going forward, so we'll, we'll give you some recommendations for that. We got our restructure preferences, how do you feel about treating residential, the small, you know, four and less residential different from the larger than four residential? You know, particularly now since we're talking about, you know, the block, you know, setting, you know, 6 or 12. To be fair, you know, you would almost want to look at a separate inclining block structure for those larger users, okay?
Wasn't that pretty similar to residential use average?
Um, not on the average, no, it was, what was their, winter use, I think, was 8,000, it was twice that of the single family or the units less than four.
You're talking 0, 4, or 4 and over?
Um...
Okay.
4 and under, and then greater than 4. Where do they have that? Yeah, so there is a, you know, and you would expect that, because they have, there's more people, there's more households in those buildings, so...
Of course, and it's almost impossible to break it out for a person, which, right, because if you take that number per person, that's probably less, but...
Mm-hmm. We have, we had one client, Grand Rapids, Minnesota, they went through and inventoried, and don't worry, I'm not going to suggest this, they inventoried all their apartments, you know, eight units, nine units, 15, and they set up their fixed rate schedule for, you know, they had a different rate schedule for the four-unit apartments, the sixth, the eighth, and their rate schedule is really long, but it's very specific, you know, to kind of address the, the per-person type of, I think we can do a good job just with a separate, you know, multifamily residential structure, we'll call it, just with bigger blocks than the single family.
On that, why is, why is the number so different, you know, the 8, 400 and the 8,000 and the 26,000?
The 8,400 and the, the 26,000. Again, that's just showing that there's a lot of small water use, you know, there's probably a lot of five and six-unit apartments, and those, the bigger, the bigger ones, the 12s and the 10s, you know, just use that much more water, where they, they pull the average up, because the, the median is the 50th percentile. There's just a lot more variation in, in that group, because, you know, they go from six units to, is there, is there a 16 unit?
64, we got a 64, it's the largest.
Oh, you have a 64, okay.
We got, well, Ty Dolls 32 is going to mess with that, because he has a well, right? The water, he waters, he's a well. So it's showing in that class, he's lawn watering, but he's not using our, yeah.
The other way to address that with those larger properties is, does anyone have irrigation meters? Is that a road you want to go down? No?
That's something that we've talked about.
Okay.
Um, it's, so you're going to have two meters per house, so therefore you have two...
I mean, if you wanted to, that'd be, you wouldn't even need tiers then.
Right.
Your residential consumption, and then you can separate a meter of all of your irrigation water, totally separate.
It's more meters to keep track of, it's more meters to replace, it's more, more complicated.
Yeah, you, you'll get...
It's complicated, but it's more input.
You'll get stuff like that, and then you don't...
Oh yeah, you were doing that one during the van, because you can get your water, but you can't get outside.
Same water. You know, and then do you, do you, you'll have folks not use their sprinkler system, it's metered, and then also get up to their outside closet, which, you'd have to replan a bunch of houses, which would cause a problem, but every city I've been, except here, did that, you have to have a separate irrigation here, unless you want to run everything through and pay sewer bill.
Which water was that?
Water was the same, just you'd have to pay your sewer bill, and that's why we winter average on a sewer. You know, we, if you wanted to do that, get rid of winter averaging on a sewer, we would, probably would have to mess with tier grades. You want to encourage conservation. Paying sewer fund would be super wealthy, I think.
Yeah. All right. So, yeah, so just to wrap up, so what we'll do then, we'll put together some alternatives based on what we've discussed tonight, we'll put those in the revenue adequacy models, and the next time you see us, we will be kind of making some projections, you know, stepping into rate increases over time, you know, not 70% in one year, you know, we'll try, we'll, we'll, we'll look at some ways for you to, to ease into meeting, meeting these revenue requirements and funding those goals. Yeah, I think, I think that's, I think I got the feedback that I needed here, and again, I apologize for taking more time than we anticipated. Do you want to, so the next time that we'll come back to console will be with some recommendations, do you want to have an intermediate, like, do you want me to work through you to provide some?
Sure.
Some more options for you to review, and via email or something, is that work all right for you? Okay.
Do you have Washington turn?
Second.
Go Washington turn, all of Bager?
I know.
Turn and...
717.
717.
All right, thank you for your time.
Absolutely.